We will stand up and at our regular meeting this August 25th and pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, one liberty, indivisible, with the liberty of justice for all.
Thank you very much. And Town Clerk, would you kindly call a roll?
Councilor Edwards?
Here.
Councilor Ruda? Councilor Madaris?
Here.
Councilor Gerffy?
Here.
Councilor Carroll?
Yes.
Councilor Costa?
Yes.
Councilor Bowlin?
Yes.
All present in the room.
Is Mrs. Black and Mr. Cody in the room, Town Clerk?
Yes.
We can start the meeting. Okay. Mr. Bowlin, would you--
Tonight's-- Approval emergency special council meeting, August 6th. Councilor Costa absent, not present, meeting. Approve emergency special council meeting, August 4th, 2008.
Excuse me, just a second. I'm not certain anybody can hear this, so Mr. Madaris is-- I'm gonna fix this up. Is that better?
Yes.
Check one, two.
Okay, sorry, Don.
Okay, tonight's consent agenda consists of approval of regular council meeting, August 12th, 2008. Approval of executive session minutes, August 12th, 2008. Approval emergency special-- Approval emergency special council meeting, August 4th, 2008. Approval of regular council meeting minutes-- 8, 2008, Councilor Carroll abstained, not present, meeting. Approval of special council meeting minutes, July 7th, 2008, recessed from 6:30, 08. Approval of special council meeting executive session minutes, July 7th, 2008. Approval of special council meeting minutes, June 30th, recessed to 7:00, 08. Receipt of minutes from the following boards and commissions. Cemetery Commission, Library and Water Trustees, two from the School Committee, Waste Water Management Commission. Correspondence received and filed. Deceived resolution from Town of Charleston regarding Silver Star Banner Day. Approval of tax abatements and scheduled public hearing on September 8th, Illinois variants for Country Day and Pardon Gray by Tiverton Land Trust on September 13th, from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m.
The-- are there any withdrawals, changes?
Madam President, I'd like to have item 3A revoked, please.
And I was advised by the town solicitor this afternoon that he would like to have us continue all the minutes to our next meeting. He had not had it-- he has been ill and has not had a chance to review those before they go to the Attorney General. So, uh-- Yes, I think we do need a separate motion on that, that all minutes will be continued. All those in favor of that motion, raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. And Mr. Edwards?
Motion to revoke the consent agenda.
All those in favor of that motion, raise your right hand. Okay.
Madam President, bringing up the Charlestown banner, reference to the Silver Star Banner Day, where the town of Charlestown has asked all their sister towns to join them in honoring the sacrifices of men and women who have served overseas. It's a day that is-- they've declared May 1st to be Silver Star Banner Day, and they've asked all the cities and towns to send their proclamations early. I think that the town of Tiverton, having a great number of veterans and people who have served their country, would be willing to join them.
All ready? So you would like to make a motion?
I would make a motion that we join the town of Charleston and all other cities and towns in the state of Rhode Island and send a proclamation declaring May 1st of 2009 Silver Star Banner Day.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Madam President?
Yes.
I've read this proclamation, and it's certainly an honorable document, but isn't this replacing what is known as the Purple Heart? This is for injured and wounded veterans. That's what the Purple Heart is called. I don't understand the Silver Star-- I don't understand Silver Star Banner. I don't understand that.
It's something that's been recognized by the VFW, American Legion, the VA Hospitals, and the Bed-Stuy also, so I figure if they were on board with it, the town of Tiverton most certainly should be.
I don't think it's intended to replace any other honor to-- So-- But a motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. I'm sorry. Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay. Moving down to the-- through the agenda.
Proclamation.
Oh, my gosh, the proclamation. Yes, the Town Clerk, would you kindly read that proclamation for us? All right, Don, you do it well. Are you shy?
There you go.
Town of Tiverton, Rhode Island Town Council. Proclamation. Whereas the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties, is a product of reflection and choice embodying the principles of limited government in a republic dedicated to rule by law, not by men. And whereas it is of greatest importance that all citizens fully understand the provisions and principles contained in the Constitution in order to support, preserve, and defend it against all encroachments. And whereas the 219th anniversary of the signing of the Constitution provides historic opportunity for all Americans to realize the achievements of the framers of the Constitution and the rights, privileges, and responsibility affords. And whereas the independence guaranteed to American citizens, whether by birth or naturalization, should be celebrated by appropriate ceremonies and activities during Constitution Week, September 17th through 23rd. Therefore, we, the Tiverton Town Council, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week in the town of Tiverton, and urge all of our citizens to reflect during that week on the many benefits of our federal Constitution and American citizenship. In witness hereof, whereof, I hereby unto set my hand and cause the seal of the town of Tiverton to be affixed to this, the 25th day of August in the year of our Lord, 2008, by order of the Tiverton Town Council.
I will entertain a motion that we adopt the proclamation.
Second.
All those in favor of that, raise your right hand, please. Motion carries unanimously. Moving on, we have a matter before us. Robert Thibault, DBA B&amp;L Investments, King's Seafood and Pizza. The request is for a virtually licensed subject, meeting all legal requirements.
Madam President, I make a motion that we-- Meeting all legal requirements. Second.
Any further discussion?
I just have one question. We have a letter from Gareth saying that in a walkthrough, there were no obvious safety hazards or violations, but we do still have something from the fire department, even though they're saying that they would recommend issuing the license, they're saying there are still some things that are not in compliance. Could you just explain?
Yes, sir, Councilman. We sent an inspector back out today. Everything is in order. They have a couple of minor items that are not substantial, but for the majority, they have taken care of all issues before us.
Thanks.
We would recommend approval.
Thank you.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand, please. Motion carries unanimously. Town Administrator.
We received the resignation from John Raposa from the planning board, and I recommend that we accept it with regret.
I shall move. Second.
All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand, please. Motion carries unanimously. Next item. Are the appointments to the boards and commission. I have had one request that we continue the proposed appointment of the administrative officer. So before we start on the rest, could we have a motion to that?
Make a motion that we--
Continue to our--
Continue the--
For our next meeting.
--administrative officer to the next meeting. Thank you.
You let both items under planning board?
Just the administrative officer.
Well, they both refer to the administrative officer.
Then they both continue.
Yes.
Let's stay on that. Just wanted to make it clear.
All those in favor, raise your right hand, please. Okay, that matter is continued. All right. On the zoning board of review, we have a proposed appointment of Michael Mello, who is the-- actually, a building inspector, a little constant, and a Tiverton resident. Seems to be well qualified. So I would entertain a motion--
I make a motion that we appoint Michael Mello, the second alternate position, term expiring 6:30, 2009.
A second, then?
All those in favor, raise your right hand.
Make a motion to appoint-- He's here. He's here, if anyone would like to talk to him, or Mr. Mello? He's already been appointed. If anyone would like to see him, please see him.
Well, Mr. Mello, you've just been appointed to the zoning board.
Thank you.
So congratulations. Would you like to make a speech, or?
He's a little shy. He's short on words.
I see, I see. Well, we certainly welcome you for that effect. Okay. I'll come down to the-- Personnel board?
We have Dick Hart and Carl Malafine.
Make a motion to appoint Dick Hart to the personnel board, who expires 6:30, 2012.
Second.
All those-- Any further discussion? All those in favor of that motion, raise your right hand. Motion carries.
We're looking just forward to--
Two. He's a-- Mr. Mello, if you may.
He's an existing appointee.
I think a motion that we reappoint Mr. Mello to the personnel board.
So second to that motion? Oh, I'm sorry. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Do we go back to the planning board? I'll get to-- I'll get to that. I am jumping around here.
I make a motion that they both be reappointed, for terms expiring on 2010.
One's 2010, one's 2011. Those are reappointed?
A motion has been made and seconded. All--
I'll second it.
All those in favor of that motion, raise your right hand, please. One, two, three. All those opposed?
I make a motion that we appoint Peter Monis to the planning board, with an expiration of 6:30, 2011.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of that motion, raise your right hand, please. Motion carries unanimously.
What happened to the-- what was the vote on the prior question? Planning board members? Three, four, against? And four?
I make a motion that we appoint Peter Corr to the planning board, with an expiration for 6:30, 2010.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
I'm not sure that-- I think in the same-- under the same token, you'd have to be somebody who voted not to appoint them, who would have to-- Somebody who voted any affirmative.
He did. He was on the prevailing side.
On the prevailing side.
He did.
Okay, he voted against.
So the motion is in order. A motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor of that motion, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Okay, moving on. Oh, yes, I'm sorry, the Stonebridge Commission Committee. We have one candidate, Shay--
Chief Oriano.
Chief Oriano. Aphrodite Oriano. Be proper.
Mrs. Oriano is a resident of Portsmouth. According to those applications. Correct.
She has said that she's a-- has been a resident of Tiverton since 1971.
Well, the applicant has a residence at 3030 East Main Road, Portsmouth, Rhode Island, as the way she lists her address. I think her residence is in Stonebridge area. She has a property, she owns property.
I think, I mean, she says very specifically that is-- She has been a resident. Okay.
Motion to appoint Chief Oriano to the Stonebridge Committee.
I'll second it.
All those-- Any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Peter-- All right, dropping down now to new business. Councilor Madaris.
This is just to see what the council's will is in terms of going forward with some type of a voter guide on the charter amendments, something similar to what's been done before. The question becomes, in the past, it's been done, is a fairly extensive booklet, which included all the language changes, and then was direct mailed to each residence. Financially, I don't know if that's even something that's feasible. I certainly don't think we need the extensive booklet. I think we pretty much need what's going to appear on the ballot and then an explanation. Something that's fairly brief. We can have all the other information, can be available on the website, can be available here at town hall if people want to refer to the full extent of it, but just, I think it's incumbent on us to have some information that we, as a council, put out there for people on these questions. It's just a matter of who's going to put it together, how much it's going to cost, and what ways we're going to use to get it out to people.
Town Clerk, do you have any--
I will check on the cost of getting something together and getting it out.
Direct mail. Well, like I said, the other question is, who's going to put it together? I was thinking probably the easiest thing is to have whoever originally proposed it, since they wrote it up originally, propose it, send it to the council for council's approval, possibly at the next meeting, because we are coming up fairly quickly on the election, so we should probably get this out at least by October, I would think, if not earlier.
The Charter Review Committee is no longer in existence--
Right.
--by virtue of the fact of the time period, so I think you have to take the existing language that has been presented to the town clerk. Probably the clerk's office is going to have to print something, she might want to run it by them, but as a body, they no longer exist.
But I don't think it would prevent volunteers from submitting--
No, it wouldn't prevent someone from volunteering, but I mean, right, it can't be something that needs to go back for an approval of--
Or approved by the charter. So it has to be sort of simple, straightforward language.
I would make two points, Madam President. Number one is, they offered to handle that for us, and number two, the last commission, Frank Marshall handled it, and I believe it was done by the Newport Daily News, I'm not sure what the cost was. I don't remember it being all that extensive. And then we knew what it once was.
Okay. And any volunteers, Brian, you might--
I'd be glad to put together whatever language. It's nothing--
We volunteer right here.
So I don't-- Whatever help is needed, but if we could have something at least ready for the council at least to look at for the next meeting, so we can get the ball rolling.
Okay, so we will continue that matter till the next meeting for a report by the Town Clerk. Yes.
Make a motion to continue this item to the next regular council meeting?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. The next request is from Stuart Hardy, and I'm sure it was prompted by the fact that the Charter Commission had proposed a creation of Historic Preservation Advisory Board, and the council, I believe, voted that they'd like to see an ordinance first.
That is correct, Madam President. The-- a little bit of history, very quickly. A voluntary, voluntary, non-regulatory Historic Preservation Advisory Board was first recommended in the 1997 Comprehensive Community Plan, 11 years ago, and reaffirmed in the 2006 Updated Comprehensive Community Plan. By the way, I'm Stuart Hardy, 162 Colonial Avenue, appearing on behalf of the Conservation Commission. According to the Comprehensive Community Plan, "The purpose of the board is to serve as an educational purpose by fostering awareness of historic and archaeological resources, engendering pride in the town's historic roots, and assisting property owners with applications to the state and federal National Register of Historic Places," quote unquote. "The purpose is not to impose legally binding restrictions on property owners. The state encourages all municipalities to have a municipal Historic Preservation Board or commission, because it provides a local contact and a partner for the State Historic Preservation and Heritage Commission and facilitates statewide programs. A Tiverton Historic Board would make the town eligible for certain state and federal grants and technical assistance programs for which we are not now eligible, absent such a board. The seven duties and responsibilities listed in the proposed ordinance language are based entirely on the language in the Comprehensive Community Plan. I request that a public hearing be scheduled on the proposed ordinance language so that we can move this process forward." You have the language attached to my request for participation on this agenda.
As I look at it, is it the exact language that the Charter Commission proposed?
It is the exact language that the Charter Commission adopted, and not only the Conservation Commission, but also the Open Space Commission has looked at that language and has approved it in their March and April minutes, respectively.
I move that go to a public hearing for adoption.
A motion has been made and seconded to move to a public hearing. We can set-- All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand, please. All those opposed, two, five to two, as I count. Now, we should set a date for the public hearing. Should we make it the first meeting in October, or the second meeting in September?
First meeting in October, that's fine.
We will set it for the first meeting in October.
Thank you very much.
We'll save our discussion for the public hearing.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Stuart. Town Administrator.
Madam President, I urge that the council approve the request to purchase tasers for the police department. We've done extensive investigation, there will be training, it would be a sole source bid, because there is only one place to buy these, and we feel that it would be a great addition to the police department, and that it would also save, in some instances, there's been an extensive backup to this that you all have. The monies for this will be coming from the drug enforcement account.
I'll make the motion that we approve the request to purchase tasers from the Sole Source Taser International, the proxy is around $30,000, utilizing the drug for charity monies.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Now that we're open for discussion, I'm totally against this. I think, I'm not sure that this town needs tasers. I don't think we need to open ourselves up to the liability on the use of these. I seem to hear more and more in the news about cities and towns that have run into problems with the use of them, with the outcome of the use of them, and I'm not sure that there's a need in a town like Tiverton for this, or something that's going to get us, or possibly get us into some issues with the insurance and the trust, you know. Somebody's going to have to show me where we've had instances where, you know, this is, you know, would have been a great help or something like that, and I'm not sure that--
Would you care to show us some documentation that this has been on the agenda since last week, about showing--
I'm not going to show-- I'm telling you, Brian, if I watch enough television, I mean, I watch news, I've seen that there's some problems, and I have some issues with this, and I'm raising my concerns.
Any questions? We have a need as to why we need them?
To the council, particularly Mr. Bowlin, the fact that the tasers have been accepted or utilized nationwide, and some of the benefits are that we avoid the use of lethal force, the permanent injuries through use of the baton or further physical altercations, plus the reduction of injuries to police officers making physical arrests. Those are some of the benefits. I have talked with the trust extensively. They've reviewed our policy procedure, and they accept it, actually endorse it, so that's where I'm basing it on. Plus, we're going to utilize the state protocols for any treatment of these individuals who should be tasered as a result of police action.
If I may, Madam President?
Yes.
Chief, you've given us a pretty good overview of why these are useful, but what is the need in our town for this kind of effect? Do we have officers being injured and arrested? Do we have any of those other occurrences happening in our--
There's always, every call a police officer goes on, there's a firearm present. He brings that firearm with him. Should the result of a firearm altercation take place, we would prefer to use less lethal force. If someone is in a residence and is going to harm themselves, a suicide situation, they can use a taser to subdue that person without risk to the officer or to that person. That's the benefit. It's not a-- Definitely not a catch-all, but again, we're just trying to use less force without permanent injury, that's all.
Chief, are they used more as a deterrent for any kind of situation?
People know that-- People are pretty confident that it's going to be a last-ditch effort for us to use a firearm, and they will actually challenge you to hurt them sometimes. There's a thing called suicide by cop. It's not commonplace, but it does happen, and when we don't want to, you know, no one wants to injure anyone. They put the uniform on to protect you, not to hurt you, and this is just a way to stop them from being hurt, or the officers being hurt, or, again, to prevent litigation against the town in that respect.
I read in the literature, that I believe you handed out, that these--
Stuglantis.
Tasers.
Tasers. These tasers are to be used by an officer between five and 12 feet away from the person being-- being, the person that's going to be arrested or whatever, and that, from five to seven, from seven to 12 feet away, you fire this at somebody, and they just lose their muscle control and fall to the ground.
Correct.
Because there are injuries when someone hits the floor, and I wonder about people with bad hot conditions, with valves that are mechanical, for example.
Actually, part of the, through the protocol and the training is, you're not supposed to utilize these persons, I mean, operating a vehicle, a motorcycle for sure, with a hot condition, if you have any knowledge of it, a pregnant person. There's a litany of steps, or persons that you're told to, not to use them on, others that you try not to use them on. But again, it's not a commonplace occurrence that you're going to use them. Everything is computerized. You have to download every time one is actually activated, and it will tell you a litany of what has happened, whether it be how long the, how long the person was given the jolt, so to speak. This is all computerized and documented for future reference.
Chief, the idea here is to give, did I read correctly, every, was it uniform personnel will have, will be issued one of these?
It's to try to give one to every personnel. I would go slowly at first and try to make sure that the, again, keeping, always keeping in mind the cost factor, but at least initially have them in the patrol division. I would prefer to have possibly done it with a situation with OICs or corporals or ranking officers, but in Tiverton, we use OICs, which can go down to the last patrol person on call, or ordered back. That person, we could get in a situation where that person's in charge and doesn't have the training, we couldn't use the tool that they, for a situation, could be deployed to hurt, to save someone rather than seriously injure someone. So we're trying to look at this situation where we would actually issue them to everyone within the department, and then they would actually maintain them better when they're issued to them, there'd be more control in that respect.
How many does that entail?
Twenty-eight. There's 28 officers.
It mentions that this is obviously coming from the drug forfeiture monies. How much is, how much after this will still remain, and is, what are the limitations in terms of what that can be used for, because?
It's used to supplement the budget, not supplant, and the fact is, we haven't the money budgeted for this, I can't see. It's to improve the law enforcement. Those are the areas it can be used into. As you know, we just purchased air conditioning to benefit the operations itself. When we're all done with this, if we've spent the entire amount directly, we'd still have $30,000 left in that account. So, and.
So it's limited pretty, it's limited pretty much, as you said, to things that are not budgetary, that are, that type of thing? Correct. That's it, thanks.
Chief, of the area of police departments, how many in the area of Bristol, Warren, Portsmouth, Newport, how many?
Bristol has them, Newport has them, Portsmouth does not. Some of the line, some of the similar-sized departments over the line do have them, full-size departments. Larger cities cannot afford them, approximately $1,000 apiece, with the training, with the other equipment that goes with it. So some of the larger departments issue them only by shift. Smaller departments, well, they can't issue them to everyone, they're issued to each individual.
I read the policy that. A couple of things in here that trouble me, but it says when an officer is deployed with one of these tasers, that ESU will request a supervisor and a backup officer in the same prior to its use, if circumstances and time permit. My question is, what if circumstances and time don't permit, what will the officer do?
He would resort to his training and utilize what is necessary equipment.
It also says that the manufacturers state that no permanent damage is caused under normal conditions, so I wondered what normal conditions were.
I think you hit upon it when you said someone had a hot condition. Again, the training would be such that you wouldn't want to, if someone in the family was screaming at you that this person had a hot condition, you would hesitate or resist using that particular tool.
There are about 10 things, 10 circumstances here in which you should not use the gun. Two of them pertain to me, and you know, I'm a reckless guy around town. Hot problems, number one. Elderly people, number two.
What these tasers will be utilized for? What happens now if that situation arises? What tool or what methods are the police using? If you went into a combative situation, you would go in and physically arrest the person, subdue that individual. In those cases, sometime, often, you'll get some type of, you could get an injured-on-duty claim, and the officer would be out of work. If it became really physical and someone did get hit, struck with a baton, there's stitches, permanent scar, and, you know, things, people do get hurt, and it is, at times, it is a physical job. This is just a way of reducing the amount of physical contact. I realize it's a tool, and I do echo some of Mr. Bowlen's concerns, but it's been researched by a number of people, actually Paul Dutra from the trust attended the TASER Academy, the Academy in Arizona, and I spoke with him extensively, so it wasn't done haphazardly, but the research was done.
So this isn't going to create a new category of things where there'll be some kind of restraint, it's just changing the tool from physical restraint to?
In the force continuum, there's certain levels. If someone definitely just complies, obviously, you're not going to use any tools, you're going to cuff the person who's under arrest or take them away. But if they don't, you have to physically arrest them, or someone challenges you to come after them, you use whatever means necessary with reasonable, necessary force to make the arrest.
In terms of the concerns of maybe an over-eager use of this, which I think some people would have, is after this has been used on someone, there's some type of internal investigation, or is it some look into why it was used and the circumstances? Is that the case?
Absolutely. Any force, if a simple baton use is also investigated, someone, if there's a use of force. But this particular tool is actually computerized, where they can download. If someone said that they kept getting tasered, it would register how many times, and the omens that went out of it, so it wouldn't be done repeatedly to torture someone, so to speak.
Right, thanks.
How many times last year would you estimate that the department would have had the use for that taser?
I can tell you offhand, three of them immediately. The person who wouldn't show his hands, who claimed he had a knife and said the officer was going to, had to kill him, a couple of the gun calls, Mr. Bowlen, that were substantiated. But again, we're hoping there's none.
And in those three instances, were there any injuries to our officers?
The, I can't recall that offhand. I can recall the person who did, who did, wouldn't show his hands, who claimed he had a knife and wanted to be killed by the officers, he was injured, and he did sustain a head injury.
Okay, he was injured, not the officer?
Correct.
But you're getting into a preventive thing, and that's the whole idea behind it, you know? How many calls does an officer go on that he actually has to take a gun with him? You know? He carries a gun because, just in case he needs it, and that's the whole idea behind this. It's a preventive thing. You know, if it's a situation where he doesn't have to draw his firearm, and that's another tool to help him do his job or her job, I mean, I think that's what we need to look at, and that's the whole idea behind it. It's another tool, and that's what they need, you know? And if we can utilize the funds out of there to do it, I think that's what we should be considering. It's a tool.
Yeah, I mean, and if you listen to the news last week and look at our package, we have a press release here from the police department announcing that this particular person who was drug trafficking tons of marijuana through Tiverton, or he lived in Tiverton, or whatever his existence is, because, I mean, the point is that things aren't getting less dangerous, they're becoming more dangerous and more complicated. So, you know, it's different in some areas, but we're around some border communities that are, you know, higher in time, of course, than what we have, and we have to, I think we just need to be prepared. It's less violent use of restraints. We have to make sense.
Are there any other questions from the council? Concerns, comments, et cetera?
I'd like to make this one for the council, Madam President. This is a relatively thick item on the agenda. We received these on Friday. I tried to, we had a family event on Saturday. Sunday, I skipped church to read it, and I was interrupted and didn't get either done. I think I could, I could persuade to vote in favor of this if I had a little more time to read it, so if we carried it over to the next meeting, you might have a yes vote from me, but if you're going to push me at this point, I'm not sure yet how I'm going to vote.
Proceed at our peril.
Nothing is simple. Yeah?
Well, I, the one thing that I would like to see, that if this is approved, that we do receive reports through the administrator of, sort of, I don't mean quarterly reports, but just to keep us informed with regard to their use, whether it's a six-month basis, et cetera, so that it is part of the information that the administrator gets, and that can be conveyed to us with regard to its use and so forth. Not the particulars, not the people, so that we're not in a privacy situation, but so that we are at least informed.
No problem with that.
One final question. It's going to be only sworn people that will carry these weapons?
Yes, sworn trained police officers, academy certified.
So what is the council's pleasure? There is a motion on the, in a second?
I have no problem continuing until the next meeting, which is the custom, we need more time to review the packet.
We wouldn't lose the money if we waited one more meeting.
Not at all, sir. The money's in the drug account, and it is a lot of money, there's no question about it. But again, it's just, it's an ounce of prevention, we're trying to take steps to keep current and to address, you know, hopefully, we'll never use them except for being certified.
You ought to be commended to that attitude.
Well, I need a motion.
Make a motion to continue to the next meeting. Second.
All those in favor of that motion, raise your right hand, please. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, Town Administrator. Next item.
Madam President, I'm requesting that we institute a building board of appeals, a building code board of appeals, and that the council direct the solicitor to draw up an ordinance for council approval.
Madam President?
Yes?
I have some questions on this. First, what was the need that drove this? Like Gareth.
If I may, Madam President, councilors, Councilor Edwards, the.
Gareth, I hate to do this, but just identify yourself.
Oh, sure. I'm Gareth Ames, and I'm the Tiverton Building and Zoning Official. Someone appealed a case where an appeal had been heard by the zoning board, and they appealed it to the State Building Code Standards Committee, who took the case because it turns out that the zoning board in Tiverton does not sit as the building board, as it does in other local communities. That was an oversight on my part because where I came from in Little Compton, they did. So it came as a surprise to me, and it turns out that in talking to the state board and some other people, that, and it was right there in front of me in the building code, that requires each town to set up a local building board of appeal, building code board of appeals. That code is pretty specific about how the board is supposed to be made up and everything, and it, to my mind, and I think I've given you the backup on it, there are three options that you have. One is to go with a local board, and I can explain more how that works, or to add it to the workload of the zoning board, but I believe that would require a charter amendment because it's not, it's not mentioned in the charter. And the third one is to continue as it is now, which defaults to the State Building Code Standards Committee. Now, one thing you should remember, this is the first time something like this has come up in three and a half years that I've been here, so it's not as if it's a huge workload. It's not as if it's a big thing. I would prefer to see it here because it's going to save the town money in any number of ways, just in travel, if nothing else. But when I go to Providence for one of these things, I feel I should have representation, so Mr. Tights went with me this last time. That money would be saved because we wouldn't have those sort of things sitting before a local board. The local board only meets when necessary, and they're building professionals, and they only deal with technical questions. There's nothing there in terms of zoning, nothing there that impinges on town issues or anything, it's just strictly whether, you know, whether this contractor thinks I've made a bad interpretation of the, of the building code. As I say, many, many communities put this on the zoning board in addition to their duties, and in fact, probably in the last three and a half years, there have been cases where some of the things that have gone before the zoning board have been either partially or in whole building issues, and the zoning board didn't even realize they weren't supposed to be dealing with it, so. That's, that's sort of it, in a nutshell. It will, it will, it has to consist of one architect, two professional engineers, one builder, and one ordinary citizen. And because this is not, well, they in fact have to set a monthly meeting date, but they won't meet every month because there's no business, so basically, they will just be called upon when there is a, is an issue, and because it's not a huge workload for these professionals, I've already been assured that I can come up with the requisite people who might serve. There's also no residency requirement, so it's not as if we have to, we have to make sure that everybody's from Tiverton.
Gareth, was this something that came out of the zoning board's workshop that they had?
No, no, in fact, that night, I was going to bring this up with them, and I forgot it. They broke up before I remembered it. This came about because the yacht club appealed my decision to have them remove their toilet trailer, and then, and they were, they would decline that relief, and the, oh, I can't remember all the details. In any case, Mr. Campbell, who was in a butter, appealed the decision, and then appealed it to the State Building Code Standards Committee on the basis of jurisdiction, that the zoning board didn't have this jurisdiction, and we are presently continued in that matter before the state.
So just to make sure I'm clear on this, this is, what's happened in the past is probably improperly, as you're saying, is that if the zoning official made a decision, it was appealed, it was going to the zoning board, and they weren't empowered to sit on those particular issues, just on zoning questions?
Exactly.
So this is not setting up something new, this is just taking something that should have been under the jurisdiction of this other board and creating that other board? Is that what is being recommended?
Yes, yes, and the, it's, what's required of you is to create the board. The members are appointed by the town administrator, and there is very little in the way of administration. There's no butter, a butter notification or any of that sort of stuff because it's strictly technical items.
And then if that, if that board's decision is appealed, it goes to the State Standards Committee?
That's right. Where normally, we would put ourselves in a situation where if an item like this were heard by the zoning board, for example, an appeal from that would go to the, go to Superior Court, which, as you know, requires lots of extra cost. An appeal from a local building code board goes to the State Building Code Standards Committee.
And if we don't set this up, it's either going to default to the state automatically for the first step, or we have to give it to the zoning board?
Right, and if it, if it stays in the default mode, going to the state, then the appeal is to Superior Court, so.
Thanks.
You're saying that the people on this board don't happen to be local residents? Doesn't our charter currently require that everybody that's appointed to a board or a commission be a member, be a resident of the town of Tiverton?
Well, you know, councilor, that may be true. That may be true. I hadn't taken that into account. I was just referring to what the Rhode Island State Building Code requires. They, they don't have a residency requirement, and in fact, they say in there that a, a member of a local board can be a member of another local board, so.
Or is that just for, is that just for ones listed? Or is that just for, is that just for ones listed in the charter, though, that it has to be a resident? Andy?
I think we, I think the charter currently limits it to the planning and zoning board, and I think that was something that we were looking at, one of the charter amendments, of changing that, and I did, I, my recollection is that we didn't extend it to every board or commission, we, we left it to a certain number of named boards or commissions.
Not for residency, though, I don't think. Not for residency.
Are you talking about the residency requirement?
Yeah.
No, we were changing that you couldn't also serve, be an employee and serve, that's the...
Right, no, but there was another one about the boards, I don't know, I'd have to look and see.
If a board or commission, unless the chart is specific that it's every board or commission, it would only be those boards and commissions listed within the charter. Those serviced by, by ordinance, you know, should fall under whether the ordinance requires a residency requirement.
Right, so.
Gareth, how many instances do you think this would be used in, say, a three-year period?
Well, assuming that I've brought something in error before the zoning board before, this is the only case in three and a half years that has come to anyone's notice. Even if we double or triple that, that would be maybe one item a year.
So you're looking, you're actually requesting us to, you know, form a commission or a board that's going to meet possibly once every three years?
Yes.
I see it meeting a little bit more often. I think when you set up this process, and someone knows that it's...
They don't exist?
A decision, a decision on a building matter, because I see this as Gareth's job as both the zoning officer and the building official. Half of the decisions he makes are building only, and probably half have to do with the zoning.
Well, it's probably more like eighty twenty.
But the setbacks and so forth, in each, in each decision he's making, some of the jurisdiction belongs with the zoning board, and some belongs with building. In other words, if, if you're questioning the setbacks on a piece of property, and you had a question over that, and he denies you, you would go before the zoning board of appeals, because you're looking for the variance to do something. If he says you can't do something under the building code, you can't hang, you can't have two drops off a meter to a single piece of property, and somebody says, wait a minute, show me in the code where it specifically says that, that's an interpretation, that person may want to go and appeal to this board and say, I have a legitimate reason for doing that, I don't see anything in the code that really prevents it, something you don't usually do, but there's no legitimate reason you can't, and they may want to go before this board to appeal that.
Yeah, I think...
They don't go before the zoning board of appeals, because of the cost involved. The minute they file with the zoning board of appeals, the butter notifications and so forth starts to run up a bill, that's, that's going to be, you know, that five or $600 they won't spend.
Yeah.
If they don't have to spend that, they may take that rather than a, by a superior cost.
There's got to be some cost to this. I mean, you're not just going to prance before this board for free.
Well, I'm just saying, if you have the decision, obviously, there's a board situation. If we want to put some kind of a fee to it, that's a different story than what he's talking about. And then we have to look at whether the state allows you to put a fee structure on this appeal process.
Paul? The towns surrounding us, Portsmouth, Little Compton, Middletown, how many of those towns have a board like this?
I don't know. The only one I do know about is Little Compton, because in Little Compton, the zoning board also sits as a building board. I haven't canvassed the other ones.
Councilor, so do you have anything to add to this discussion?
Sure, just to answer your question, Bristol does have a separate building code board of appeal. And I do support this. It's something that's provided for in the code, I mean, if you notice the language, it does say that a board of appeals shall be appointed by each municipality. It does have a fallback saying, if you don't have one, it goes to the state board, but the, the first instance is that you should have this. I didn't realize that we didn't have our zoning board so designated either, so I think this is a fairly simple solution to a fairly simple problem. It does make things a little bit easier, as Councilor Boland indicated. I mean, most of the stuff that this deals with is not going to be the yacht club property dispute type thing, but it's going to be, someone is wanting to finish off their basement, and the code says they need 68 ceiling, and they've only got 67 or 66, and so they want a variance from that to do it that way, or something like that. Most of the, something like that, where now they wouldn't do it if it was a major thing to the zoning board, or even going to Providence with the state board, if there was a local board, they might be willing to do it. And beyond that, if there is something that's a bigger thing, at least allows us to have a little more control of it, having it here on the local level, before it goes up to Providence. And the Providence, the state building code board of appeals is a very unwieldy group, it's about 18 or 20 members, and they have trouble getting quorums, and they have subcommittees, and it's, it's a very tedious process that, that allows someone who wants to eat up a lot of time to do so. I've been involved, not in this town, but in another town, where there was, an opponent basically took it up on appeal from the local board, and, and used it to eat up a lot of time. So to the extent that a local board can short-circuit some of those things, I would recommend it.
And I've been before them in Providence, and I'm just rather hesitant to let some group, especially if we're going to appoint people from outside the community, who are not going to have any idea what's going on here, to come in here and circumvent something that, you know, our zoning board might, might not go for.
But it's, see, it's, I think, I think it, I think it's totally separate issues, because it isn't something that the zoning board of appeals. If it has to do with the zoning aspect of that, that's exactly where that would be. It only has to do with those sections of the building code.
I understand, Don, but we could also just give our zoning board, or any existing board, we could give them this charge.
Yes, we can, if we change the charter, because, well, no, the charter, the charter doesn't allow for it, this is, this is what the problem is. If they're charged, if, if they're listed there, you know, this is something that would have been nice if it came up, you know, three months ago. Because if it came up three months ago, while we were in the charter revision process, we could have at least changed the duties and powers of the zoning board of appeals to include the building issue. And we probably can do that, but it's going to take us putting this off for a period of a year or two. And in a year or two, we send people into Providence.
In a year or two, we're not going to have that many instances where this is going to be required, and I think we're going down the wrong path here.
May I, may I just, I, I mean, that's a policy choice, whether you go, I think you need to, I think you ought to do something other than leave it with the state building board to review. My recommendation is the local one, but it's, that's not a legal recommendation, it's a policy choice whether you go with the zoning board or the local building board. I, I do not think it needs a charter amendment, because the charter says, the zoning board of review shall have powers and duties as prescribed by the laws of the state, town ordinance, and this charter. And then it shall also serve as a plating board of review, and it shall have powers and duties as prescribed by the laws of the state, town ordinance, and charter. So it says the same thing twice on that. And the laws of the state already provide that they may sit as the building board of appeal, and the state enabling act for zoning board says that they may have other duties as assigned by the town council. So I don't think you need to amend the charter. I think you can do it either way, by ordinance, and it's just a policy question.
One advantage that I see, that's not, by putting it in the zoning board, you don't have, is that you will be dealing with builders, architects, and if the ceiling should be six and a half feet versus, or wanted, at least you have people who are builders, who have some expertise. On the zoning board, we don't, you know, we put members of the public, people like me, who aren't really contractors, never will be, and they are dealing with the public policy and the setbacks. So I do see that as an advantage.
Yeah, the zoning board lost their only contractor a while ago, and he's been missed.
If we were to place this with the zoning board, would there still be that typical fee that, that you go before the zoning board, that would necessarily, that would...
Yep, and it's, it's have your stuff in one month ahead, wait a month to go on, wait for a month for an appeal, period. It's...
Even if they're set up with these separate powers, we could alter that, or...
I don't see, I mean, you have to have, set up a whole different set of rules for them.
See, I, I, there are some advantages, even though we, uh, at least on the cost and the expertise, or just getting a decision, I can see that. If it does not work to our advantage, next time the charter commission meets, we can always combine it, or...
Or if it, if it can be done by ordinance, we can have the ordinance, you know, I'm a believer in trying something that's going to benefit the process, and having that type of a professional board, where they have to be architects, builders, and a citizen, we're going to at least have a knowledgeable board. I agree with you, the zoning board, you put them people there for different reasons, and their expertise, and whether it be the legal issues of, you know, variances and so forth. These are not variances they're looking for, these are opinions on the zone code, I mean, the building code. And I like the idea of the board, and I move that we create this board by ordinance, and have the solicitor draft some language for a public hearing.
Second.
How do you intend to recruit to fill this, these billets? Where are you going to get an architect, two engineers? I can see you getting a builder all right, and a citizen all right, but this is going to take more, it's going to take two years to put together, so I don't want to have any more problems for the next three years.
I, I would, I would agree with you if it were a standard board, which required a meeting every month, or maybe two meetings, or something like that, where people hesitate to commit to that sort of time. But, but as I say, this board, I think, even with an added, which is a good point, even with an added factor of people taking advantage of it, because it is local, I don't think it's going to meet that often. It's, it's strictly as needed.
Which is once every three years.
Well, a motion has been made, and the motion has been seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. All those opposed to the motion, please raise your right hand.
Agreed, thank you.
Oh, okay, then one dissenting vote.
I mean, if you're using a telephone, it would be...
Okay, town administrator.
Madam President, just before you get off, since we've already got a public hearing on October 14th for the historic preservation advisory board, we'll try to do this for that same date.
First meeting in October.
First meeting in October.
Are you going to be able to have language for that in time? For the advertisements?
For the building board?
Yes.
I think so, yes, it's pretty...
Then I move we advertise that public hearing at the same time that we advertise the public hearing for the historic preservation.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. I'm getting too close, he's got, he has the floor.
I don't have the floor.
Okay, town administrator, oil.
I have to use the same mic. I request that the council approve the award of a contract for fuel oil for the next fiscal year to Brennan. The RFP went out, and it was for fuel oil for the towns of Portsmouth, Tiverton, Bristol, Newport, and Warren. We received five responses, and this company was the most cost-effective at $3.45 per gallon. So we'd like to award the contract to them.
Make a motion that we award the fuel oil contract to Burnin' Oil and Door Problems.
Second. You know, there was one thing, it says that all prices will be good until August 13th, 2008. I assume, can I assume that that has not been changed?
The director of work has always taken care of that.
Right, we've, we've got a slight extension on that.
Yeah, Madam Chairman, we have been in direct contact with Brennan, and have it in writing that they will, they extended that date till you met and hopefully approved it.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded.
I have one question. The difference between the fixed price and the variable price that's listed here, is that...
Yeah, that would be, I believe it's 12 cents over what they call rack.
Yeah.
And that's, that's higher than what this price is right now.
But I mean, was this a comparison, or is this, are we locked into a fixed rate through this?
We will be, $3.45 a gallon for all of our heating, heating fuel.
So this, we're sitting here, it's just for comparison, then, is that, are there thoughts about variable price, number two fuel?
We had an option with their bid to, to, you know, gamble.
Right, okay.
And it was a 12, 12 cent above and beyond whatever the price was going for at that particular point in time.
So everything here is locked in at that, is fixed at that price?
Yeah, we're suggesting fixed, we know what the budget's going to be, and that price is 53% higher than it was last year.
When, when we were doing the budget, what was the estimated price per gallon when you were doing your budget? Do you recall?
I don't recall, no, I don't, Paul, I'm sorry.
Bet you it wasn't $3.45 a gallon.
No. No, it wasn't. But it was a tough guess.
Thank you.
The, I'm sure the town administrator is going to be passing out sweaters to your people who work in the town hall, and schools, et cetera.
We'll also, we'll also give them to the council members for Monday nights.
Okay, um, next items? Oh yeah, all those in favor of the, of the vote, uh, motion, raise your right hand. Next item is town administrator.
I've got a few announcements. The police chief already alluded to the fact that the 34-year-old air conditioning system in the police department has been replaced and is complete. We're hoping that it's going to be much more energy efficient, and we have applied for energy credits. We are moving forward with advertising to replace a policeman and a control center operator. I believe you're aware of the fact that there will be test borrowings that start at today, tomorrow, and Wednesday in the North Tiverton Moratorium area. We are also repairing street basins in that area at the present time. We need to congratulate our animal control officer, who has now been certified as an animal control officer. Sewer fees for the sewer users in North Tiverton. The rate has been lowered by Fall River from $5.21 per 100 cubic feet to $3.94 per 100 cubic feet. That is a savings to the town, which is passed on directly to the users. Couple of days ago, I went to the Johnston landfill. I think we need to congratulate our recycling committee, as well as the citizens in this town, for recycling 1,700 tons of cardboard, plastic, all the recycling materials. We recycled 1,700 tons and received $43,581 back from reci, recovery, say it again, help me, Jay. Resource recovery, thank you. That was a good surprise, and hopefully that will continue, and it will give our citizens an incentive to recycle more. We also expect a $66,000 check from the Bourne Mill tomorrow for a building permit. So these are, these are good items, and I'm happy to report those. We are having some difficulties with offices as a result of the, the cutbacks in personnel. We're having some difficulties with closures of offices. So what I'm looking at is closing all the offices simultaneously from 12:30 to 1:30 to allow everyone to take lunch at the same time, and then it will become evident that the town hall is closed between those hours, and we won't have people running to different offices, because they weren't sure why it was closed that day, so on and so forth. So if everyone takes lunches at the same time, I think that'll be easier for the public utilizing our services. That's all I have for announcements.
What was the time again?
12:30 to 1:30. And the reason why I chose 12:30 to 1:30 was to give people who do try to get to the town hall to conduct business on their lunchtime, it gives them the opportunity to do so.
Jim, one of the things that, it seems to me that resting on our laurels of 25% recycling really is not that great. And one of the things that I really do think that we should set a goal, and increase it every year, and I'd like to sort of have this communicated to recycling and the landfill committee, that perhaps we should set a goal of 30%. I pass, and it just drives me crazy, too many...
I pass, and it just drives me crazy, too many houses that are not recycling.
I think one of the things we need to do, ought to consider, is a change in our ordinance where, by publicizing it for us, of course, that trash will not be picked up unless the recycle bins are out.
That's some of the, one of the items we propose.
Yeah, I mean, because I think that's.
There's a group of issues that recycling and landfill subcommittee applies forward, I mean, through the DBW and the town administrator to address those issues. And that's precisely one of them.
Yeah, I think that's one area at least.
These Providence did that. And they had a lot of squawks initially, but where it is really a tangible return, I agree. I really think that we should have some very hard facts of moving to that as a, as a position. $43,000 is huge. It's huge to the town of Tiverton. You know, it covers the summer recreation program, that kind of thing. If we could double that, you can just, the number of things that we could cover in our budget, which is, you know, really very thinly financed in some areas.
One of the others we're also addressing, Madam President, is the fact that we're looking to have our hauler handle the recycling for us. We think we actually might get a better price from our hauler because then he won't have to take it all the way to Johnston. So there's a value there and he's going to put it on the open market. Recycling materials have a value.
Yes, they do.
So we're looking at different options now.
One of the reasons why in some cases we need to watch the people, happens in every neighborhood, you can watch them, they drive by for trash day and they're taking the valuable recyclables away from the recycle bins before they ever do get picked up. And that creates another problem.
It does. And that is something that it seems to me that our, our police could pay some attention to on their patrols. I reported one at one point when Mr. Steckman was here and they did send a letter out. Whether that person came back, I have no idea. But it's going to take an effort, but I certainly support Mr. Bolland's idea that we should take a look unless your recycling bins are out, the trash isn't going to be collected.
The, the focus of the landfill subcommittee at their last meeting, and Mr. Rice was there with us, the focus was at that meeting, what can we do to increase recycling? So the committee is aware of it and I think that they're thinking very strongly about issues and how we can deal with it. And they are coming up with some good recommendations.
Very good. Okay, council announcements.
On a less than positive note, I want to throw it back to the question, I can't find the particular item, but we're, as a town, going to be faced with renewing our landfill license. And we're going to have to engage an engineering firm, probably par engineering, to do that. We've got, we received a quote from them, the tune of $12,500 to complete that engineering review, plus there's a $3,000 licensing fee that has to go to Riden at the same time. Now, if it's in the budget, I just overlooked it, but I could not find it. So it's just, we receive some good money, someone's going to go.
Is it around the end fee of $3,000?
Well, we're the only one, the only state, town on the state level that has the ability to have a landfill.
We all live in the same state.
Yeah, okay, let's, not always welcome news, but news.
No, but I just wanted to bring your attention before we go down certain paths.
Ms. Sir?
I have something on a more positive note. Today, Sally Black and Paul Carroll and I had the opportunity of attending what was Community Service Day at Ranger School. And, you know, what we observed there today is something that needs to be addressed. I'd like to take this opportunity to just recognize Peter Monis for the very hard work that he's done in giving the new Ranger School some curb appeal. Today, he had students from Roger Williams University who did their community service work in helping spread mulch and plant trees and water and take care of ground cover and shrubs and all kinds of things. Peter told me that he had received a grant for like $5,000 and he received 25 trees with that money. And then another six trees came with another $3,000 grant, which was a donation for three benches to be installed on the school grounds. With the force of the Roger Williams students, the water berets that meet every Saturday to, to help water these plants and saplings, Tiger Landscaping has also done a huge amount of pro bono work for the town. He initially told me that first, the first round of plantings, town had some equipment troubles and he, Peter contacted Tiger Landscaping. He went down there and was able to bring his equipment to dig holes, to plant trees. And today what we saw was an inordinate amount of truckloads of mulch and his labor, the labor of Tiger Landscaping with all this pro bono work and materials. So I'd just like to take that opportunity to thank all the people who've been involved in giving the Ranger School its new look. Thank you.
Anything else from the council? Before we move to the council, listen, everything, Mr. Tyson?
Just to note, this was handled in executive session at the last meeting and then discussed at the, after the executive session, but there was nobody here, so I'll just mention it now because it was made public at that time and it's near packet, the mortgage. The, the town had, has been purchasing open space all along. The open space commission, together with the nature conservancy in the town, have been working for years. About a year ago, some property was purchased, included a no interest loan from Rhode Island DEM. It was part of the components. That was expected to be paid back with a grant that the town has been expecting from DOT and we're still expecting it. We have the certificate of award, but we don't have the cash. So in the meantime, as the council members know, the council at the last meeting voted to take the nature conservancy up on their kind of offer to loan us the money at the same 0% interest so that we could pay DEM what we owed them at the 0% interest. And that was done immediately after the meeting and we were able to pay DEM within a day's time. So we're still expecting the DOT grant and it's still costing nothing since it's still at 0% interest.
We're at the point with the executive session and.
Madam President, motion entered into executive session under 4246582 litigation.
Second. All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand, please.
If further remain in executive session under 4246585, possible acquisition and disposition of town hall property.
Second. All those in favor of that motion, raise your right hand.
And if further continue under 4246582, collective bargaining.
Second. All those in favor of that motion, raise your right hand. We're in executive session.